Good evening, Board members. In the absence of Mr. Cully, who could be with us tonight due to illness, I call the January tenth, two thousand twenty-three Board of Supervisors organizational meeting to order. As the clerk of the board, and the first order of business is the election of a chairperson for the coming year. Do we have a nomination for the office of chair?
Mr. Parton, I would like to nominate Mr. Floyd Thomas for chair.
Second.
We have a nomination of Mr. Floyd Thomas, or there are other nominations for chair? Hearing none, I close the nomination process. There is a, we need a motion?
Need a vote.
Okay, call the vote on the, you've heard the motion for Mr. Thomas to be chair for two thousand twenty-three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Congratulations, Mr. Chairman. I turn the gavel over to you.
Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Thomas? Well, he's gonna move.
He wants to move next time.
Oh, okay.
All right, thank you, Board members. Our next order of business is election of a vice chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I have a nomination.
Mr. Underwood?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Jeff Seeley as vice chair.
Mr. Underwood nominates Mr. Jeff Seeley. Is there another nomination for vice chair?
I'll nominate Jeff Black.
Mr. Forehand nominates Jeff Black. So we have Jeff Black and Jeff Seeley. Is there another nomination? At this point, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Mr. Seeley as vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
All those, Mr. Forehand, how do you vote?
Aye.
For Mr. Seeley. Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Seeley?
Aye.
Mr. Underwood?
Aye.
Mrs. Long?
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well. Then the vote for Mr. Seeley as vice chair is unanimous. Mr. Seeley is officially the vice chair, and now our next order of business is adoption of the rules of order. Board members have the rules of order in their packets. Are there any changes to the rules of order?
I make a motion, we adopt the rules as presented?
Mr. Seeley makes a motion to adopt the rules as presented. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Mrs. Long makes a second discussion on that motion. One question we'd added last year, we allowed board members to read comments due to COVID. We want to keep that? We could probably keep that for one more year. That was just a point of discussion if the board members wanted to continue that.
I really don't think that's necessary.
Forehand was saying.
Um, sorry. Two-one B. How, how, how hard are we gonna stick to that, or do we need to change that?
Can you repeat the question, Mr. Forehand?
The section two-one B on the first page.
Two-one V?
Yeah. Business accomplished or completed by ten P M. We need to change that, or we're gonna stick to that, or what's, what are your thoughts? I'm open either.
It does say attempt, doesn't it?
It does say that.
So I think that's a.
Sounds good to me.
It's a goal, and there may be some times when we have to extend that a little longer depending upon the agenda, but I will make every attempt to be gone by ten o'clock.
Okay.
So we're gonna keep that. We're gonna keep the COVID rule one more year, allowing board members to read letters. Any other discussion?
We are going to keep that.
I'm asking.
I'm not opposed to getting rid of it.
And, and Mr. Thomas, uh.
Should come in fast enough to get our comp to be in our board packet.
Well, let me let Mrs. Long finish. Mrs. Long?
Well, that was my feeling, is that it should be in, in time to be in our board packet. Or else we could have multiples thrown on the desk five minutes beforehand, and, and that, just like all the other clutter we sometimes get. I just would like to, to go back to eliminating it.
Mr. Thomas, I, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we should go back to the way it was and eliminate it. And I think that'll help us be efficient as well as helping those people who have comments to make sure they get their communications, be it either media-wise or email-wise, to their representative. So at least we know what the thoughts are within each constituent's area. So I would think we would want to get rid of it, but.
That was a fair point, and Mrs. Long, and you and Mr. Seeley said get rid of it. Mr. Seeley, you made the original motion to adopt the rules of order as is. Would you amend your motion to exclude that particular item which we'd added last year?
I will do that, Mr. Thomas.
Mrs. Long, would you do the same to your amendment, or to your second?
I would.
Okay, so the motion now before us is to accept the rules of order as presented minus the rule that the board members would read constituent letters due to the COVID requirements. So all in, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? That motion carries unanimously, and we got, now go to our schedule of regular board meetings?
Mr. Thomas, I have a suggestion that we add a meeting the end of July. I was looking at the calendar, and from tonight until the end of May, we have like seven meetings. And then we get into that June to August with, if we cut out everything in July, we only have three meetings in that period. So it, it really cuts the amount of meetings we normally would have by about half if we eliminate all of July. I think we should consider having a meeting on July twenty-fifth because we're gonna get so backlogged, and it's not fair to make applicants wait while we have five weeks in between meetings. We are still gonna avoid the Fourth of July holiday, and I think it would just help us from getting backlogged if we have one on July twenty-fifth.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Black?
The, I will not be here in that last week. My, my dad's eightieth birthday is, and I'm already like planning to be up there. So I would not be here that last week of July. So that would be, that would be definitely out for me.
Mrs. Long, another date, twenty-fifth into the eighteenth?
Yeah, we could certainly, I didn't bring my calendar with me. But if we can find another date, I just think it's, it's just too skinny on meetings.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Seeley?
Can we just ponder this, since this is the adoption tonight, and, and have staff look at? I mean, we could make this decision in, in May or April. Let's look and see what, what the trajectory is at that point, because I know we're throwing a dart at dates at all these, and I, I just know like November sixteenth is probably gonna be.
Not happening.
Right. So, I mean, there's a couple of dates on here that are.
We could even consider having two meetings in August. August is usually a one-meeting month.
Right.
But we could put two meetings in that month just to catch up.
Right.
Budget and all, we're gonna get backlogged.
Because it's just, it, it's hard. I mean, I know we're setting the calendar tonight, but we always do, I mean, we generally deviate some dates. It's just a suggestion.
Mrs. Long, is that, is that fair to you?
Yes, it's all we.
Okay.
Yeah, let's look at August and talk to staff and see what we could do, but I just think we need to add another meeting in there somewhere.
So we would be, we would be accepting the motion to set the schedule of board meetings as presented. One meeting in even months, two meetings in odd months, with an I right now to look at a meeting either in the middle of July or a second meeting in August, just to make sure we catch up and we'll make that determination later. So is that your motion, Mrs. Long, now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll second. Motion made by Mr. Long, second by Mr. Underwood. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? That motion carries unanimously also, and now we get to Board of Supervisor appointments.
Mr. Chairman, before you do that.
Yes, sir.
I think Ms. Hall has some things she wanted you to just take a five. Okay, we're good. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you for that. She, she managed to make me multitask, so.
Okay.
That's what she does. Next is our, our Board of Supervisor appointments. The appointments are in your board packet. The first one we have is R triple A.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Forehand?
We seem to have, no, we're still in the appointments for. We're still in the appointments for like our, our outside agencies, like you are in Par.
Yes.
In the beginning of the.
Beginning of the.
Agenda, beginning of.
Beginning of the agenda, like the org, yes, it's our appointments for like GWRC. My, my apologies. Yep.
Yeah, these are not, these are not board member appointments to positions. These are, well, they are board member appointments to positions, but not board appointing other people to positions. So the first one we have again is R triple A, Rappahannock area on aging. Mr. Underwood has served in that capacity last year. Would you like to serve again, or?
Last, last twelve years, I think. Yeah. So yeah, I'll be glad to, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I will. Well, let's, let's go down the mall and see if there's any changes. If there's no changes, we can, we can adopt them as our social services board. Mrs. Long? Mrs. Long would like to continue. GWRC and FAMPO are Mr. Black and Mr. Seeley.
Sure.
Mr. Black?
As, as, yeah, we just need attendance at those meetings, but yes.
Okay, Fredericksburg Government Affairs, Mr. Seeley served in that capacity last year.
I'll do it again.
You're the board's veterans, so that's a good, good one. Rappahannock Regional Disability Services Board, Mr. Cully. He's gonna do that again. Rappahannock River Basin Commission, Mrs. Long. You've got the river. Rappahannock Regional Alliance, that was Mr. Forehand. That's business.
If anyone else would like it, I will gladly step back from that. Hearing none, I guess I'll take.
Mr. Forehand, if you don't want to, I'll substitute or share with you if that's the case. I know how your schedule is now, but that's.
Well, my attendance has been poor the last twelve months, so.
All right, I will.
What day is it, you mean, Mr. White?
Every other month on a Monday, which makes it hard for me.
Every other month on a Monday?
Every other month? Okay. I will take that for you, Mr. Forehand, if that's okay? So I've got F R A, recreational advisor board.
I'll gladly hold on to that, nobody, unless somebody else has an interest.
Okay. Yes, Fort A P Hill Executive Steering Committee, Mrs. Long. Mrs. Long says yes. Broadband Advisory Committee, that's Mr. Seeley and Mr. Thomas. You wanna continue?
Absolutely.
Okay, I will continue also with the hope that neither one of us will be needed after the end of this year.
Correct. We hopefully were there.
Yeah, this is our, for those who don't know, this is our year of, of applying for a grant through the Vatti program, and if we're successful, the grant will cover the entire county. So the board members wouldn't need to be on the broadband committee because we'd have broadband, which would be a blessing. So what, what we have are all of the appointments from the previous year, with the exception of the Fredericksburg Regional Alliance being Mr. Thomas. So we'll take a motion to that effect. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Mr. Underwood makes the motion, Mr. Seeley seconds. All those in favor, if there is any discussion, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The motion carries unanimously also. And at this point, I don't know, I don't think we need a motion, but we can close the organizational meeting?
So moved.
So, thank you. Is there a second then, just to make sure?
Second.
All right, Mr. Seeley, motions, Mr. Underwood seconds. That we close your organizational meeting. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? The motion carries unanimously. So we've closed our organizational meeting, and now we'll begin with our regular Board of Supervisors meeting, which will begin with an invocation. So if you'll please stand and join me in the invocation. Dear Father God, we come before you this day. First of all, I'll say thank you for your grace and thank you for your many blessings. We ask that you be with us as we decide those important things for the county, guide our hearts, make sure we do what's right for all of us, and we ask your blessing, all these things we ask in the name of Jesus the Christ. Amen?
Amen.
And please join for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All righty, at this point in time, we get to opening board comments. We will start with Mr. Forehand.
I do not have a name today.
Mr. Black?
I'll make up Mr. Forehand. Just a, just a few, just a reminder, the polar bear plunge is coming up in Lake Landor on February fourth. We are rolling along pretty well. A lot of organizations I know are raising quite a bit of money, so we're hoping to try to meet or exceed the amount of money last year that was raised for the organizations, which was forty-three thousand dollars, so. And that all went to charities here in Caroline. Tonight in the audience, we do have Mr. Scott Sullivan, he was my, and we're gonna recognize him in a little bit. He was my planning commission, on my planning commission for a little bit, for a few years. Great guy, and I'll talk more about that. So thank you for coming here tonight, Scott. I do want to thank staff. Back in the summertime, we got a grant to build twenty homes in Caroline County. And I know there's been some, there's been some hiccups along the way with getting those homes, finding a place for those homes. I think we're coming to an end to that, but I do really, really want to thank staff for helping out Mr. Tickle. These are, these are gonna be, I think sometimes the, there's a misnomer when it comes to Habitat. This is for working class. These are for what they call the Alice population. These are for people that are, you know, county workers, firefighters, police officers, teachers. The first one is actually going to a veteran. And some of the models I see for housing up in Fredericksburg is a lot of the, well, there's some of those, some of the houses are, after they're built, there's crime-infested, and this is, this is, I think, a really, really good model that Habitat is, is, is doing here in Caroline, and I think we should be thrilled that they're doing it. And, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, one of the things I had talked about is the possibility, if we could look into it, is when we put land up for auction, so foreclosed land and so forth, or tax sales, if there's a possibility that the county, I don't know, and that would be a legal matter, if there's a way that the county could kind of turn some of those pieces of land over to Habitat. So that way, they would get the land for some of these people that are, that are working. The other thing is county hookups, the fees, that people pay to hook up to county water and sewer. If there's a possibility for, for example, I know like Caroline High School or Caroline school system in general, I know that they sometimes have a difficulty with keeping teachers for, you know, a long time, and I'm wondering if there's a way on our hookup fee that we could say we could waive the hookup fee after, you know, that the hookup fee is, I don't know what our hookup fee, what is our hookup fee now? I think it's more than that. Yeah, if there's a way like after, if they work in the school system or the police force for, you know, five years, six years, we could waive that fee after a certain amount of time. I don't know if there's legality behind that. But if it's something that we could look into, I know there's some federal grants that do the same for teachers, Pell Grants, so I don't see why that wouldn't be an issue. And then finally, on a personal note, I do want to give a huge shout out to the school system. Over, when I became a supervisor, I guess, ten, twelve years ago, now I had to give up. I, I coached baseball in Spotsylvania, and I, and I had to give that up, and I loved it. But I was able to still continue to do small coaching. The teams, schools have like, kind of like trivia teams, kind of like Jeopardy. And they're called the academic teams, and I've still been able to do that at Spotsy High. And yesterday, we were actually at Caroline High School visiting. And in the past, Caroline has been a team that has been one of the weaker teams in the district. And yesterday, I was, I actually texted the superintendent last night. They were young, they were knowledgeable. They are one of the better teams that we have faced all year, and I told the coach that. I, I texted the superintendent that. It is nice to see that the school system is succeeding, and that was a great thing to see for Caroline. So thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Mr. Seeley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to say congratulations to Sheriff Moser, who started one January on the retirement of, of Sheriff Lippa, and congratulations to Major Nutter on his promotion. And he's back here filling the role that the major filled before. So congratulations to both of you. Glad to see you tonight. And good luck. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Seeley. Mr. Underwood?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just echo the sentiment of Mr. Seeley. Certainly want to congratulate Sheriff Moser and Major Nutter on their promotions. Certainly want to say Happy New Year to all the county residents. We're looking forward to a great year in the county in terms of moving forward, and we have some projects that I think the county residents will be pleased with what we're doing in the county and how we're growing the county, and I'm just looking forward to a great twenty twenty-three. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Mrs. Long?
Just a couple of things. First, I know I'm a day late, but I want to express gratitude and thanks to our law enforcement. Yesterday was Enforcement Appreciation Day, so Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, so we do appreciate you all. Please pass our gratitude on to the rest of your staff, if you would. And also, I want to thank Mr. Underwood and Mr. Black for, for acting as chair and vice chair last year, getting us through another year. And thirdly, I am happy to say that the broadband from our first grant is almost complete over on the seventeen corridor. They were hooking up houses in Port Roll over the weekend, and I got two calls today from people up in Rappahannock Academy saying thank you. I can't believe how fast this, this speed is on this computer now. And they were just delighted. So keep our prayers going and our fingers and toes crossed that the other grant we hear from, and that we're successful in that one. So thank you all who have served on the broadband committee, and for David and his staff for all the work you've done getting that done. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Long. I have just a couple. Again, my congratulations to Sheriff Moser. And that sounded a little funny when I said it, because it's been Major Moser for so long, but congratulations to Sheriff Moser and Major Nutter. I think the board members got an email from the sheriff recently, and it's, it's a really exciting email. I'm, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to say all the things that were in it, but I think a couple of things the sheriff had mentioned was he's gonna make sure that there's a lot of transparency in his office. He's gonna make sure that, that we do some things like body cams for the deputies, which I've said was a good idea for a long time, because I think that's gonna protect the county. And one other really great idea was a program, an internship, externship with the high school students, to maybe recruit people into law enforcement, which is a great idea. So I personally am looking forward to supporting the sheriff in his endeavors and wishing him the, you know, best of success. And on another first responder note, for those of us who were watching Monday Night Football a couple of weeks ago or last week, I wanted to, to say thank you to all of the first responders in Caroline, because I know you go through those sort of things every day, and, and oftentimes you're unappreciated or underappreciated. So I just want to say thank you. The Chiefs here, we do appreciate all the work you guys do. And just shows, just goes to show that your quick response always saves lives, so it, it, it is a great thing, and we want to. So it, it, it is a great thing and we want to say thank you. That's all I have and we will move to amendments. I believe there were several, Mrs. Hall, if you'll help, there's a proposed amendment. Oh, Mr. Parton has them, thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, you have a revised, uh, agenda before you. Uh, Mr., as Blister Black mentioned, uh, we've added recognition of, uh, Mr. Scott Sullivan. That had not been confirmed when we, uh, put the agenda to bed, uh, last week. Uh, we also have a proposed, uh, consent agenda item. It's a purchase over, uh, fifty thousand for Public Works, uh, for a dump truck. Uh, Mr. Shebel can provide more detail, but the, the summary is that, uh, we were ordering a dump truck from, uh, the state contract and, uh, and learned very recently that the price had gone up by, uh, about ten thousand dollars and that the, the order would not be delivered for eight to ten months, I believe. And, uh, Public Works has been able to find a, uh, a, a dump truck on a lot in, uh, Ohio, I believe, and that is available immediately, uh, for a price that's actually a little less than, um, than the state contract when you, when you add in the, uh, the dump truck bed that would have to be added to that. So we would like to make that purchase and add that to the agenda's item, uh, consent agenda's item four.
Four I is on our revised agendas.
Yes.
And additional information on item number five is also on our desk. That's the surplus year-end funds, we'll get to that with number five. Any board member have anything that they wanted to add to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Underwood?
Um, now that you mentioned the email from the sheriff regarding, uh, body cams for, for his deputies, for his officers, I wonder if we could just have an initial conversation this evening about the cost as well as how that would be, uh, how we need to go forward to take a look at that. What's the plan, if we could have him?
I think it's a little premature, because I'd, maybe I shouldn't have mentioned it, but he said he's having discussions with county staff.
Okay.
So it's probably not even ready to come to us.
I just wanted to have a, okay, that's fine.
So I think when Mr. Cully is back, maybe at our next meeting, we can make that an agenda item.
Okay.
Which is definitely a good point. Alright. So we, we have at this point no, uh, amendments to the agenda. Uh, at six-thirty, we will move to presentations. Before we do that, we've got presentations for, uh, resolution for Mr. Akers and Mr. Sullivan.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Okay. Mr. Sealy makes a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, Mr. Underwood makes a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously, the agenda is adopted as presented. Uh, before we do presentations, we have McKenzie Heidelmark, who represents Congressman, Congresswoman Spamberger, who as of January first became the seventh district Congresswoman representing Caroline in attendance. Ms. Heidelmark has made her way up to meet the board. If you would just like to stand and let people know that you're here and you are the contact for Caroline. If you'd like to just tell us a little bit about how that's gonna work.
Sure. Hi, everyone, thanks for having me here. I've spent a really nice day in Caroline, everyone's been really nice everywhere I go. We are here to serve. So if anyone in the county has an issue with a federal agency, be it Social Security, IRS, the VA, please reach out to our office. That is what we are here to do, is to liaise between constituents and federal agencies. And if the county or either town has a federal grant which they're trying to get, please reach out to us. We would love to write a letter of support for you. And, um, I will, I plan to be here a lot in the next two years. So you will be seeing a lot of me. I'm really excited to be here and the Congresswoman is thrilled to be representing Caroline. And please let me know if you have any questions. And, um, we, again, very happy to be here, everyone's been lovely and thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. Is there a contact number for the office yet or are you still working on it?
We do have one, if anyone, I mean, I also have cards, but our number is eight oh four, four zero one, four one one zero.
Thank you very much. Our meetings are broadcast via YouTube, so the county will now know the number to call.
Oh, wonderful, that's great, alright, thank you so much.
Thank you again. Uh, at this time, we will go to presentations. We have a resolution in appreciation for former supervisor, Mr. Wayne A. Akers, for his service to Caroline County. Is there a member of the, the Akers family here? Your sister's not coming? And I, I have a personal touch, I think I made this statement at the, at the funeral service. I've served with Mr. Akers for twenty-four years. So when I, when I look at you guys, you're a lot different than when I first saw you from, from, from what Mr. Akers has said. But he definitely bragged about you two over and over again. So on behalf of the board, I will, uh, read this resolution. It's a resolution honoring Wayne A. Akers. Whereas Caroline County lost a valued public servant and a leader on November thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two with the passing of Wayne A. Akers. And whereas Mr. Akers devoted thirty-eight years of his life to serving the people of Caroline County as a public official, ten years as a member of the IDA, followed by twenty-eight years as a Madison District Representative to the Board of Supervisors, beginning in nineteen ninety-eight and ending in twenty fifteen. And whereas, one of the longest-serving members of the board's history, his accomplishments helped usher in an era of tremendous growth and progress for Caroline County, including development of the county's first public water and sewer system, setting the stage for an economic development boom along our interstate interchanges that continues to this day. Construction of a new state-of-the-art Caroline Middle School, Lewis and Clark Elementary School, along with major upgrades and, and additions to all county schools. Development of a career department of fire and rescue and emergency management. Carefully managed residential growth and establishment of the Caroline County Family YMCA and Ladysmith. And whereas, Mr. Akers rose through the ranks to become the first and only member of the Caroline County Board of Supervisors to serve as president of the Board of Directors of the Paco State Convention. Whereas, Mr. Akers was well-respected for his intelligence, leadership skills, I know that one well. Commitment and dedication to his beloved Caroline County and leaves behind a lasting legacy of service for the future generations of county residents. Now therefore be it resolved that Caroline County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes the outstanding achievements of the late Wayne A. Akers and gratefully acknowledges his many contributions to the people of Caroline County. Be it further resolved that the board expresses its deepest condolences to the family of Wayne A. Akers on his path. This is adopted the tenth day of January, twenty-twenty-three. It is signed by Mr. Cully and recently signed by me as the new chair. So on behalf of the county, we thank you for Mr. Akers' service and we appreciate it. And we would like to present you with this resolution and as a small token, a Caroline County flag, which Mr. Akers definitely represented well. So if you'll come forward. Casey, you're coming. I think we'll all look at the flag. Thank you. Thanks, we appreciate it. I will give it to you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Actually, can we stand by the Caroline flag? We're gonna do a family shot, so they'll, they'll have a family shot. Where's your, uh? Oh, you guys are on point? Yeah. Oh, it's sad. Oh.
Let me get one more, we got one, two, three. One more for the round.
I think we're gonna take one with the whole board if you don't mind? No, I don't know, we'll stand behind you, yeah. Is that well? How's, how's this gonna work? No, no, no.
Underwood, I cannot see you. Okay. Alright, got everybody, one, two, three. One more. Awesome.
Maybe just saw the pictures on the wall.
In the back?
Yeah, and my girl was like, ba-ba-ba-ba.
That's the right thing to do, we should always do that. And again, thanks to the family of, uh, Mr. Akers for sharing him. It's not easy to have a board member in the family, as all of us know. Uh, so we appreciate that. Our next order of business is the recognition of Mr. Scott Sullivan for his service on the Planning Commission. Uh, Mr. Black has a resolution that he's gonna read.
But before I, uh, read the resolution, I just, one of the things that, uh, supervisors, when we're elected, we have to do is we, we have to appoint people to different positions. And Planning Commission, I think all of us could probably agree is what the most important position that we have to appoint, because, uh, everything that's coming to the Planning Commission is eventually, coming to us eventually. Uh, in, I have had a history of having, uh, great, uh, people on the Planning Commission. Um, and, uh, when I, when the previous, uh, my previous Planning Commission appointment had to, uh, resign, I was looking around and, and it just, Scott's name came to mind. Uh, I got to know Scott, um, basically as, almost as soon as he moved in to the county. Uh, and, uh, I actually taught two of his daughters at Spotsylvania High School. And, uh, Scott is one of those people that, when I talked to him, appointed him, he is a person who, um, when he took the job, he was gonna do it not because of politics, but because of what was right or wrong. Um, and I liked that immediately. Scott doesn't think what's politically best, Scott thinks, hey, what is best for Caroline? And that's, I think, all of us could take a lesson from that, Scott. So I appreciate your honesty, your integrity, um, and, uh, we agreed a lot. So, um, anyway, I just want to go ahead and read this resolution, so thank you. It says, "A, a resolution of appreciation for Scott Sullivan for his service on the Caroline, uh, County Planning Commission. Whereas, Mr. Scott Sullivan served Caroline County as the Western Caroline District Representative to the Planning Commission from November ninth, two thousand twenty-one until December, uh, thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. And whereas, Mr. Sullivan has performed, performed his duties as a member of the Planning Commission with distinction and professionalism. And whereas, Mr. Sullivan's background, knowledge and experience have been a great benefit in representing the residents of Caroline County during his time on the Planning Commission. And whereas, Mr. Sullivan has devoted countless hours of his personal time and energy to serving the people of Caroline County and trying to make decisions that are in the best interests. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning, uh, that the Caroline County Board of Supervisors hereby expresses its sincere appreciation and gratitude to Scott Sullivan for his service on the Caroline County Planning Commission and extends its best wishes for continued success in all future endeavors. Signed, uh, Mr. Cully and Mr. Thomas."
You can say something. If you want to say something, we'll come with an, we'll have you come up.
Sure. Uh, you know, one of the things, uh, that I, over the last year or so, thought was so important is the Planning Commission's role in helping to ensure that we do our due diligence and provide you with insights, you know, that you may not have time to do. Um, yeah, and really look at the, I heard you say something earlier, uh, Mrs. Long, about holding applicants up. And, you know, we can do that at the Planning Commission level too, if we're not careful. You know, so it, it does cause applicants extra money every time we defer and it takes us longer. So that was something that really resonated with me and something I tried to, you know, expedite at that level. A lot of our local businesses, you know, we really need to look out for them. There, many of them are county residents. And, uh, as they go through their endeavors to do more, that was something I really tried to consider in any of the decision-making that we had. But, uh, I thank each and every one of you for, you know, the service that you give, all the constituents here and all the other, uh, commission members that we had. So it was a real privilege to be a part of this organization and county. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. If you would like to come up, I think Mr. Black is gonna present you with the resolution and we're gonna take your picture. Okay, appropriately, our next order of business is appointments for Planning Commission from the Manapanae District. I'm gonna make a motion to reappoint Mr. Purcell Minor. If I can get a second, seconded by Mr. Sealy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. And we need a member from the, for the community policy and management team from the schools. And I wasn't ready with that just yet. Mr. Parton?
That would be Mrs. Heron.
Paulette Heron, who's the, uh, new, uh, Director of, uh, Special Education, would be the nominated appointment for schools.
Paulette Herring, Mrs. Long makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Forehand makes a second for Paulette Herring to be the CPMT representative from the schools. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. That motion too carries unanimously. Uh, consent agenda items, is there any item that a board member would like to pull from the consent? Uh, understanding that there's additional information on four I, which is on your desk and we got, uh, an email for that. Any item to be pulled?
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion made by Mr. Sealy and seconded by, by Mr. Black to approve the consent agenda as presented. Although, any discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion too carries unanimously.
Mr. Thomas? I have the motion for closed meeting. If we move into that now, we could be done before seven-thirty, just a suggestion.
I was gonna ask that and I flipped over to see if there was anything. I was gonna ask that, and I flipped over to see if there was anything on the back. We have first readings and a purchase. Mr. Parton, do you know how long the closed meeting should last? Is it short, long?
We have forty minutes.
If we don't ask any questions. Is it enough time for me to do possibly Agenda Item Number Six?
Yeah, I think half an hour, even twenty minutes would be sufficient to, for the closed meeting.
All right. Let's do the closed meeting now.
Yeah. Then we have, we'll be able to have a break.
We'll have a longer break. Mr. Sealy, you have a motion to go into closed meeting.
Yes, sir. I move that the Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to the consultation with legal counsel, exemption of section two point two dash three, seven, one, one, dot, dot, A, dot, eight, the Code of Virginia, for consultation with the county attorney and discussion with staff regarding the terms or scope of a contract relating to an economic development project in the Port Royal District.
Is there a second to Mr. Sealy's motion?
Second.
Mr. Sealy makes the motion, Mr. Underwood makes the second. Discussion on the motion to enter closed meeting. No discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. We will move into closed meeting. And the board will reconvene at seven thirty for public comments, which are scheduled for exactly that time. So we will stand in closed meeting.
Yeah, I apologize. Mr. Parton is back. We apologize for the length of the closed meeting. It did run a little bit late.
It did run a little bit late. So we're now reached the public comment section of the board meeting. At this time, the board extends the courtesy to citizens to speak on any matter that is not a public hearing. You have three minutes to make your presentation. And at this time, we will declare public comment to be open. Is there anyone who would like to speak on any matter? I'm sorry. One second, Sheriff.
No problem.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that Caroline County Board is supervised, certified as the best of the board members knowledge. Only public business matters lawfully exempt from the open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which this certification applies and only such public business matters that were identified in the motion commuting the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board.
Thank you, Mr. Seeley. That was your motion to close. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Seeley motions to close the closed meeting, seconded by Mrs. Long. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. At this time, Mr. Forehand, do you certify?
I so certify.
Mr. Black?
I so certify.
Mr. Seeley?
Mr. Chairman, I so certify.
Mr. Underwood?
I so certify.
Mrs. Long?
I so certify.
And I so certify. So we have now completed the closed meeting, closed it, and made the appropriate certifications. And now I will again open the public comment section. Sheriff Moser, good to have you.
Nice to be here, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to say thank you to this board and their leadership and their guidance for me in the new position of sheriff. It's been amazing the amount of support that I've gotten from you guys. And I couldn't have done it without you. And I believe that the partnership that we have is going to make the sheriff's office a great department for the county and the citizens of Caroline. As a matter of fact, this weekend, I got a call from Jeff Seeley in reference to a situation in the county. And I, you know, I appreciate those phone calls so that we can get those issues addressed efficiently. So that was a great phone call that I received the other day, and it really did help expedite the service to the citizens of Caroline. And I hope that each and every one of you would do the same. I know that a lot of you guys have given me some advice in this new position as sheriff, and I thank you, and I will continue to look forward to working with each and every one of you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff, and forgive us if occasionally we call you Major Moser.
That's not a problem.
So we will endeavor to call you Sheriff Moser and look forward to working with you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak as part of the public comment section? Is there anyone else who would like to speak part of public comment section? Last call. Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding public comments? Hearing none. Public comments are closed. We get to item number five on the agenda, which is a discussion of the fiscal year end funds from 2021, 2023. Board members should have on your desk another copy of that notice. Mr. Parton, is that you that wanted to or is going to take the lead or Mrs. Smiths?
Mr. Chairman, we placed this item back on the agenda for discussion at the direction of Chairman Underwood and have just tried to provide some information, some factors to keep in mind as you discuss this about some of our known upcoming expenses that we've already committed to and some that may be coming so that you have informed discussion related to what to do with the balance of funds from fiscal year 22.
Thank you, Mr. Parton. I believe the board had already received notification from Mrs. Smith, the finance director, about the $5 million that we increased the fund balance by. However, there were some extenuating circumstances that made that increase significantly less. Mr. Underwood, you had asked to discuss this, so I'll let you go first.
Mr. Chairman, after, you know, conversation with Mrs. Smith and staff, I know that we're going to start paying principal on the Lady Smith project for water, the $20 million that we borrow, which is going to increase our principal payment. I know that we have on our agenda the building of the Sparta Fire Department. And I thought it would be prudent of us to be proactive, knowing that we have reached some borrowing limits. Our fund balance is in great shape. I think we've been very fiscal responsible. And I would like to see us consider paying off those things that we can pay if possible. I know that we could put, after that money into a restricted fund related to Sparta Fire Department. Or even if possible, have the opportunity to pay off that fire department completely without borrowing money similar to what we did with 639. I just think it's important that now that we do have a strong fund balance and we have a number of items coming that we can pay for, I think we need to put some funds away in a restricted fund and possibly paying off some of the other so that we don't have to continue to borrow money when we can pay off some of our projects completely. So that's my rationale.
Board members have any other comments? Mr. Forehand? We're discussing. So any comments?
Not specifically that, no.
Mr. Black?
No, I mean, I do think one of the things that's concerned is, and I understand that, but the 19 new firefighters that are in here, you know, that's under operating. So, you know, I know it's all county money and so forth, but we, you know, it's $1.2 million that we definitely need to worry about. So I just don't want to really have to worry about paying for 1.2 million of that all at once.
Mr. Seeley?
I had a discussion with Mrs. Smith once upon a time here recently doing some budget stuff. Can you tell us what we've already encumbered? Because I think, I know I saw the number, and of course, I can't find it right this second, and I didn't highlight it, which was.
There's 1,030,000 at the middle, at the top of the second.
There it is. I just want to be mindful and at least hear from her on what else. Because I know that we have, we have used some money and we're looking at some others from the, you know, unencumbered balance, which in the cash position we're in, which is probably more than adequate. But we're also into the fund balance for part of the budget. Is that not true also?
That is correct. For fiscal year 23, we budgeted $1,278,312 to come from reserves.
Did that have any, as Mr. Black said, did that have any of the firefighters in the budget? Do we start paying for those in January?
Well, what happened for fiscal year 23 is the 19 firefighters were added in. They were staggered within the budget for this fiscal year, some for three months, some for six, a lieutenant for nine months. However, the revenue for those items was from the Safer Grant. Unfortunately, Caroline County did not receive that Safer Grant for fiscal year 23. So we would not, we would not have those revenues for that.
So we'll need to look at, we'll need to look at how we're going to pay for that.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And approximately, how much is that, if I can?
It was nearly 1.1 million, but that's for staggering across the full year. And if I'm correct, Chief, you have not hired those 19 firefighters yet, so we don't have any expenses for that currently. But to answer your other question, Mr. Seeley, outside of the 1.2 million dollars, we have added supplemental appropriations to hit the unencumbered fund balance in the amount of 3.2 million already for fiscal year 23.
3.2 million. Right.
That's going to be like the batty grant. We did the personnel additions. There were the lights, Keystone amendments, the Lady Smith Road project, the registrar addition, utilities truck, fire rescue, I spent on some engines, and then all of the rollovers that we did from last, from last meeting, December 13. So that's going to be the encumbrances and the balances that we said that we would roll forward.
Bless you. Is there, well, I'm going, Mrs. Long, do you want to add something or add something?
I'm just trying to get a handle on this. So the unassigned general balance fund is up to 28.2 million?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, but we've already made plans to spend all these upcoming expenses out of that, correct?
Yes.
So that's going to take us down to 23, 22, something like that. And aren't we supposed to keep like 22 or 23 in there for our bond rating?
Yes, ma'am. And also, outside of these items, you have also approved supplemental appropriations for the current fiscal year as well.
That all came from. More money coming in.
I'm sorry.
We'll have more money coming in throughout the year.
Yes, ma'am.
But it looks like we've already spent most of, appointed most of what we have to spend extra. At least we won't have to borrow it. But once we pay all these things on the known upcoming expenses, we're going to be back down to 22 or 23. So that's not going to give us much to put in a special account. It's just my basic math thinking.
I would say that there were some expenditures because we budgeted 18 months prior. We don't know what the true revenues would be. Some of the items that assisted with the fiscal year 22 surplus was the fact that the personal property assessments were higher. Even though we lowered the rate, we eliminated the VL, the tax fee, we still received more money for our personal property. We would do the same for this year. So there would be some revenues that would come in to offset some of the expenses, which would allow for us to potentially restrict some of this money. I just don't want there to be a, we've got $5 million, let's spend $5 million. So that's just the caution.
So was that your recommendation? Did you have an official recommendation or you need time to prepare one?
I guess because we know where we sit in regards to debt, my official recommendation would be to restrict some of the funds for some items that we know are going to be forthcoming to ensure that we have allocated that money for those purposes, and we know that we're not going to go out to get debt for those items. But just keep in mind that there are going to be some other expenditures that will come in.
Right. And I didn't, I didn't mean to put you on the spot as to say, do you have a recommendation since the agenda item is discussion? But, but I just wanted to hear your, you know, professional opinion. It seems like a lot of the things we have to do are public safety related, fire and rescue, sheriff cars. These are all things on the third page of what she gave us. So it seems like it's a good idea. Mr. Cully is not here, so you have, you had a chance to discuss this with him? I know he's been out for a few days.
We have discussed it, Mr. Chairman, and he reviewed the memorandum, so I think we're all on the same page there.
Okay, but we don't have a recommendation from him right now.
Correct. We recommend a portion. I don't think we ever specifically came up with a percentage or number, but we do recommend a, we think it would be prudent to consider reserving a portion of that money for a restricted fund.
Okay, it sounds like that's what the, what the board would like to do. Would, would we like to consider a number at a later date? We're not going to spend any of this money in the next two weeks.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I didn't think anybody planned to anyhow, but it's probably since we were discussing it, maybe to discuss individually with Mr. Cully and maybe Mrs. Smith, what we think that number would be and have them come back to us. I think the board seems to feel pub, public safety is where we should put this money. So if that sounds fair, we'll, go ahead, Mr. Underwood.
Mr. Chairman, I had an opportunity to speak with Mrs. Smith, and they are looking for direction from us as to what we need to do. I think that's what they would, as you talked about, the public safety and some other expenditures that we know that are coming. And when I talked to Mr. Cully and Miss Smith, clearly we just want to make sure we restrict at least 50% of this money into a restricted fund to make sure that we have money available, that we don't incur debt, and that we continue to move forward in a solid position. So I think the staff, if the board needs to investigate further, ask them for a recommendation. I'm sure they'd be happy to give us a recommendation, but we haven't had some conversation.
And that's, that's great. I think that's, that's kind of where we are. Mr. Forehand, you started to say something?
No, I would, I would concur that I think we should at least have go to stuff that we already know we're on the hook for, that we are at the outlay, and public safety is a big part of that, so.
Okay, would it, would it be acceptable to the board if we direct staff to come back with a recommendation of at least 50% to go into public safety as a consent agenda item for our next meeting? And that'll give everybody a chance to say, or have discussion. I know the chair had discussion with Mr. Cully and maybe Mrs. Long or another board member would like a discussion opportunity.
Rather than designating Mr. Chairman, could we just simply put it in a restricted fund?
Sure.
And not designate it for one specific, but just put it in a restricted fund, and then we identify after that.
I, I think that's the case. Do you have to have the fund name before you restrict it?
No. I can restrict it for public, public safety projects if you'd like to hold it there so that you're able to use it for.
It'll be broad enough. We can always, we can always go in.
Yeah, and public safety, at least on your list, is construction items, fire trucks, sheriff cars, ambulances, so that's good. All right, we'll ask, Mrs. Smith, we'll ask you and Mr. Parton with Mr. Cully if you can put together a restricted fund for that and, and bring it back. I think the board is saying at least 50%.
Okay.
Give us your official recommendation, and we could take that as a consent agenda item.
Okay, and just for the board, that 50% would be 2,597,251.
Exactly the number you have here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Our agenda item number six is a proposed purchase of an interior, of interior furnishings and equipment for the New Carmel Church Fire EMS station. Now that we've restricted funds, here you are, Chief Loftus.
Exactly. Good timing.
Chief, I've got my.
Chairman, members of board, good evening. Before you is a fairly old item. This was brought up in the fiscal year 23 CIP process. It was approved through the CIP along with Carmel Church. Back in September, when we had the CIP meeting for debt service, this was one of the items that was deferred to 24. I would ask that the board reconsider that. By deferring this to 24's borrowing, which would be sometime September-ish, Carmel Church is scheduled to open in November, I would have trouble getting all the things we need for the interior of that station and the alerting system in that short window, given supply chain issues and inflation. We reran our numbers here to purchase everything that is on the list that was put together by staff. We have seen an uptick approximately about $14,000 in the cost of those items between December of 21, when we put the list together, to where we are today. So if at all possible, I'd like to see this moved up in the, in the borrowing process or staff's recommendation is to use the unencumbered fund balance to cover those costs. Any questions?
I have a question, Mr.
Mr. Seeley, questions for Chief Loftus?
Here's my only question is, we don't have a fire station. If this stuff starts to arrive, where do we put it?
Yeah, so we made some other space in the cannery. Kevin, myself, Major Moser, we built some extra storage there. We have storage in the logistics building to do that. But a big chunk of this money is the digital alerting. To do that, but a big chunk of this money is the digital alerting system. And we need those computers, we need the interface at the nine one one center, the rack systems. Those all can be put in place ahead of the stations. And right now getting computers i- is one of our.
I just wanna make sure we weren't gonna overwhelm ourselves with stuff. Dumps it on us in June or July, cuz they've got the end of their fiscal year coming and they're going, we wanna sell all this stuff, so we're not paying anything on it. That was my only co- only question.
But Chief, you, in your memo, you don't list how much the computer system costs out of two sixty four.
It, it's in there under um.
Or is it in the back, it's past the summary?
Yeah, if you look at station alerting and then you go to the individual pages, I broke it down into large categories. If you, I can break those two down to you. One is the station equipment, one's the nine one one center equipment, and one is the computer interface between the CAD and the U S digital alert.
Do you have that number offhand, so I don't have to scroll through? Just, just what the computer system costs, cuz.
A hundred and sixty two thousand four hundred eleven.
Yeah, it'll be a lot harder to get computers and desks and chairs.
E- even with desks and chairs, I would, it, we're seeing a, a fairly good delay.
The computer side of this is just miserable.
Yeah, it'd be, it would, it would be a travesty to have a station and.
And nothing.
No way to talk to people.
Right.
Mister Parton, has staff discussed this with Mister, with Chief Loftus and do you have a recommendation from staff?
We are on board with the, with the request from Chief Loftus and uh indicated that in the, that is our recommendation. Uh, which you can find in the.
Mister Chairman, I'm gonna go ahead and move that we just do this. That we approve um two hundred and sixty four thousand seven hundred fifty dollars from the undes- uh designated fund balance to pay for the purchases.
Second. Oh, it's two sixty four.
Motion is made by Mister Black and seconded by Mrs. Long to make the full payment. Of the two sixty four, two hundred sixty four thousand dollars as opposed to just the one sixty we just talked about.
From the un- undesignated.
And come from the undesignated fund balance. Yes, sir. Right, the original request was two fifty, so we're only increasing fourteen thousand from the original request, but the original request wasn't funded.
The original request was deferred until fiscal year twenty four.
So we do need to do the whole, okay. Thank you, Mister Chairman. Yeah, we're really only funding fourteen thousand more than what they originally asked for. But now we have to do the whole amount, expedite their original request, yes.
Inflation's getting us on everything.
Yes. Any other discussion? Again, the motion is to uh approve the purchase of interior furnishings and equipment in the amount of two hundred sixty four thousand. Made by Mister Black, seconded by Mrs. Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief. Agenda item number seven, the first reading of the subdivision ordinance section five access, Mister Fincham.
Uh, Mister Chairman, members of the board, if you'll allow me, I'll go ahead and do seven and eight together since they are uh interrelated. The two subdivision ordinance amendments you have before you tonight for first reading. Uh, all relate to section five of the Caroline County subdivision ordinance. The, the first item, uh section five dash twenty two, which is the minimum width requirements for uh streets. And the second is uh five dash twenty four, which relates to. Uh what's currently classified as cul-de-sacs, but we would reword to, to turnarounds. Um, with um. Development in the county and the need to ensure that we have adequate uh, uh. Access for our uh fire and EMS vehicles, uh we met with Chief Loftus and, and identified some concerns. Uh concerning right of way wi- or road widths, uh and adequate turnaround. Uh in some of our uh communities um uh, uh under development now. And we brought these two ordinance amendments forward to you, uh to address those public safety concerns. It would guarantee a minimum roadway width uh of twenty six feet. Uh currently, we leave that up to V dot, but we would uh specified it where V dot has a lesser standard, twenty six feet would be required. Uh and the other is an adequate turnaround at the end of a, a street. Uh again, V dot standards, anything less than a hundred and fifty feet doesn't require a cul-de-sac. We don't want our fire apparatus having to back out to the next closest intersection to um. Uh to be able to turn our vehicles around. So this is all related to public safety, uh specifically fire and EMS. Uh and the planning commission recommended both of these items to the board uh for approval.
For questions. Uh questions for Mister Fincham at this point in time?
Yeah, one, I got a couple, Mister Sealy. Um, so we have several subdivisions that are in like phase one. Would this affect their phase two or phase three?
Yes. Anything that is not currently approved, does not currently have a plat approval, would be required to meet these new, these standards. If you have approval, then you're vested. But if you don't have that plat approval, you would have to meet these standards.
Okay.
Questions? I have a question, Mister uh Fincham. And uh NFPA, which I guess is National Fire Protection. They say that the fire department road should be twenty feet wide for unobstructed width. So is that enough?
No, sir, we think twenty six feet, particularly with the, the fact that we're now uh acquiring a, a new aerial apparatus. With the stabilizers that have to be extended uh related to the, the full operation of something of the fire apparat- of the. Uh aerial apparatus, we still think that the twenty six feet's appropriate.
I, I mean, if they want twenty feet and there's a car parked, theirs twenty feet from the twenty six, is that gonna be enough?
Ours would be twenty six feet of unobstructed access.
Ah, so parking would not be included in that?
Correct.
So the subdivision would have to have a twenty six foot road and space for parking.
If you're gonna have on-street parking, that would be in addition to the twenty six feet.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Motion to move this to public hearing?
So moved.
Second? Second, Mister Chairman. Motion made by Mister Sealy, seconded by Mister Underwood. That we move items, agenda items seven and eight to public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Mister Fincham, you've got number nine?
Yes, sir. Uh, the last item is T X T eleven dash twenty twenty two, which would amend. Uh the definition of special events facilities uh to allow the board to allow up to four. Um, uh, events per year um that were ticketed or. Um si- similar types of, of events. Um currently, the ordinance does not allow those ticketed events. Um, but uh this amendment would allow the board to consider. Uh a limited number of such events uh during a special exception process. So it, it expands the opportunities for these special events facilities uh to, to look at other opportunities. Subject to board approval.
And, and as of now, that's unlimited number or that's? Questions for Mister Fincham, Mrs. Long?
Yes. Mister Fincham, what is the definition of the special events facility?
Um, a facility where private weddings and parties and other similar events. Um are held which are not open to the public. So the first half of that. Um, definition on, on the back of, or on page two is the current definition of a special event facility. So these are in effect by invitation. The amended language would allow, again, with board approval, up to four events. That were open to the public um and not by invitation only.
So each event, each of the four events would have to be approved before?
The board would, I think would allow the number and type, um but you would not have to approve each event individually.
I guess my concern is a lot of these event uh facilities are close to. Other homes and things. You think of weddings and um birthday parties maybe. Although kids could get pretty noisy, but adult birthday parties, anniversary parties is being fairly quiet. Whereas a. Twenty-four hour jam.
Ticketed concert, something like that.
A mud drive, you know, uh motorcycle race, I don't care, but it could be very noisy. So how do we control that? You, you want people to be able to have special events, but you also wanna protect the sounding surrounding.
Understood. Uh, uh, again, I think that goes back to the whole issue of the public hearing process. And your consideration of the event venue to begin with. These, these. Uh, facilities. You look at them on a case by case basis. So you look at all of the factors related to. The request, including the location, the number of occupied residents in proximity to that location. So again, when you make your reg- when you make your uh decision to, to approve or deny. A special exception for a facility like this, it's based upon the. Application itself and the factors related to that application, including the impact to surrounding properties. That's the public health, safety and general welfare consideration.
So they would be coming to us for each event they wanted to sell tickets for?
If it requires, if it requires a permit, then yes. But if they were under the threshold for a special event, uh, uh for a um. Festival permit or, or music uh permit, then they would not have to come back individually for approval. So right now there's a threshold, uh an attendance population or an attendance threshold. Uh that requires a separate permit from the board. If they don't meet that attendance threshold. Then they would not have to come back to the board for a separate permit. You would place or could place conditions related to that. That use as part of your special exception permit approval.
So there would be one set of regulations that would cover all facilities that would qualify under this to have. Ticket sales four times a year if they so wished.
No, again, you would look at that individually with the special exception permit application.
So they would come back to us?
Well, they would come to you one time unless they met or exceeded the threshold for a music festival. Then they would have to come back to you specifically for that permit as well.
Nancy, I got a que- got a question that might help. Um Mister Fincham, uh for example, a wedding venue, we'll, we'll take the, the barns at Mattapanai.
Yes.
Um, they're currently approved to do X number of wedding events, you know, events per year.
Yes.
So they would come back, or are they already designated as a special events facility?
That, that would still require board approval. Amend their permit. To, to.
Add that.
Add the four uh addition uh events or include that in their current permitted number.
Okay. Are there any of, besides Meadow Event Park, are there any already approved?
Um, you have the one in Charlesburg.
The one in, what, Mister, is that Mister B's?
Um, that's a separate per- that, that's a, a separate permit, but uh we have um. Uh Magnolia Fields, I believe, in Charlesburg.
Yeah.
Um, and I believe there's one other approved facility and we have a couple in process.
Okay, so we, we have two besides Meadow Event Park that are already, that would fall under this currently?
Uh, two and a, and probably soon to be two more coming, coming before the board. But they would have to specifically request this as part of their application.
Okay. And that could be, we could do a line item veto.
Yes, and, and, and you would evaluate that request um as part of this, of their, their consideration of their special exception permit.
Um, but this is. Different, a different approval than like a wedding venue.
Yeah, this, this is in addition to what you can currently do at a wedding venue.
Okay, thank you. Mister, Mister Fincham?
Mister Sealy had a question first, Mister Black, and then.
So we've approved some pretty small wedding venues or, or, or. Special event venues. So if somebody, some of the, most of them are under a hundred people, so if they go to wanting to have. A, an event venue. How do we, I, I, I mean, parking has been my biggest concern with a lot of these because their fields are not lined. Nobody parks the way they should when you got a field. So I. So do we take, is that what you're saying, we would take into consideration if they applied is that. You can have a hundred people and you're gonna sell tickets and you may have three hu- see, you don't know how many people are gonna show up when you do that. That's my. Primary concern with the smaller venues is that if you can only, if you only have an acre for parking. And three hundred people show up. Then we've got a real problem because they're parking on the road, they're parking everywhere, you, you know. And I'll use the, the barns at Mattapanai, I mean, they own, what, a hundred and something acres. They could designate parking anywhere they wanted.
I, I think as part of the permit approval, you limit. The number of attendees to this public or ticketed event to a hundred, just like. The underlying special exception permit.
What do you do when there's more, I mean, a hundred people could, is a hundred cars and some of this didn't park a hundred cars. So if they violate that. Is it an automatic, we don't do that again, or do we have, do they have to come through the whole process? I mean, the sheriff's offices, the neighbors are gonna call, they're gonna show up. Our phones are gonna ring.
Then we get a complaint, it's a violation of the approved special exception permit. You had that same situation now, quite frankly, with the. Currently approved special uh events facilities or wedding venues. And then if you have a limit of, of two hundred or one hundred uh attendees for a wedding and you end up with one twenty five. That, that's a scenario that could take place currently under. With an approved uh venue. So it's not a new issue. It, it, I think is enhanced. By virtue of a fact that it could be just a concert where tickets are sold. I don't think you would, would have concerts with ticket sales for, uh when you're limiting it to a hundred. But I think the, the, the concern about the um extra attendees is probably heightened. That's something that would have to be evaluated during the process. And if it's a violation, it, it come back to the board and the board can revoke the permit.
I just don't wanna see somebody think that they can do that and then their, their whole, every, the whole business they have is in jeopardy. Could we set a standard in this process that you have to be able to park? A certain area for parking so that you can't exceed or be on the road. I mean, what criteria can we set in the ordinance, I guess, is what I'm asking?
You could do that or as a condition, no on-street parking. That's a condition of your permit. Yeah, no on-street parking, and that's something that we have actually thought about. Or think about in these, these venues when we look at them. You know, one of the biggest concerns we hear about wedding venues is. Uh, you know, the influx of people into the rural areas, parking on public roads because. Like you said, there's, there's inadequate parking on site. I think we can, can condition. Uh and that would be a, an appropriate condition uh to place on a permit to ensure that that. Uh, that's not an issue.
Yeah, I got a question on it. Uh is like, let's say, for example, if Magnolia Fields is up in my area. And you said there's up to four times a year, let's say that they wanna do one as a concert, two is a horse show, three is. Is it all, I mean, it's like, say it's four different types of events.
That would be fine. We're not saying or encouraging it to be. Four concerts as an example, okay? It would be for any. Up to four events where the public can attend or tickets are sold to attend the event. We're, we're not.
Okay.
Recommending. Um. You know, specific types of, of public uses, that would be sorted out during the process.
So like, now, now Mister, Mister Chairman.
Mr. Underwood and then Mr. Forehand, and then we'll kind of.
Mr. Fincham, if I'm correct, once that the entity applies for the permit, that says they can have four events. Will different types of events determine, will will they have different? Is it possible for them to have different conditions? Or would the condition of the first conversation carry through for all four events?
I think it be, could be either or, depending on the type of events that the applicant indicates that they are looking at to include in their facility.
Let's say I wanted to do a dog show.
Mm-hmm.
And I wanted to bring in twenty trailers with dogs on them to my property. But then I wanted to have a children's circus.
As another event.
Mm-hmm. Which are two very different events in that there's possibly some overnight issues. There's possibly some noise issue with animals and how do, how do we then put in place conditions that cover the possibilities of different events without knowing what are the variances for those events?
You have some general provisions now. For example, you have a noise ordinance that's that speaks to your your decibel level um, in in rural areas where the majority of these event facilities are approved. So fr- from from a noise perspective, you already have an ordinance in place that if there is an issue arises and a complaint's made to the sheriff's office, there's an ordinance in place that that can be enforced. Beyond that example, I think it it it's incumbent to write the conditions to try to address all of the concerns that that the board might contemplate.
So so I, so I hear you saying that then we would have to be fairly open minded and pretty.
What those uses might be?
Look, yes.
Yes.
To make sure that we're covering those during our conditions.
Yes.
Agreements, correct?
Yes, and again, you, this simply allows an applicant to request.
Yes.
Does not obligate the board to approve these additional public uses.
I I understand, but if someone comes in here with a very nice event that we say, oh, that's that's great. Let's say I wanted to do a Wounded Warriors event. And we all agree that that's that's a a great, and then that as a second event, they may wanna have a a vaping contest. And then we didn't think about it, then we're on the hook for whatever arises from that situation, correct?
Yes, I think the other thing you can do, as an example, is even though it allows it's a general amendment that allows up to four events with board approval, I think as a condition of the special exception, you can have these four events for a venue subject to review and approval by the board annually. So you could make a condition in your special exception that these types of events require review and and approval by the board annually. So each year they come back and say, here's the events that we wanna have this year.
I I'm concerned about the first four.
Understood.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fincham. No more questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, lady and gentleman. Um, Ms. Long, were you done or you wanna come back?
Uh, I'm gonna come back to this. Alright, so I think I understand what we're trying to do. But I have some real concerns. Yes, we have a noise ordinance that should should protect, but how many times have we listened to people whose homes are being bombarded by sound from the, from the concerts that we already have approved at the state fair? Yeah, we have a noise ordinance, but the sound still carries. And so they're not really a violation, but it does.
Mm-hmm.
And then you've got your traffic and you've got your parking, and unless we do this on a yearly permit basis with all the four events planned out and done, I don't see how we can do it without opening a hornet's nest. There are a lot of good things out there people can sell tickets for, lots of charities and fundraisers and and that type of thing. I understand that, but it's gonna have to be so tight. If not, we're gonna have people lined up down the aisle complaining about noise, complaining about traffic, complaining, and we're gonna be all right back into it again. So I think I'd like to have an idea of what type of restrictions and guidelines planning we recommend before we move any further on this.
Works for me.
How does the board wish to dispose of this? We can uh, send it back for more clarity to the planning commission? We can move it to public hearing. Mr. Seeley?
I I think the planning commission at least ought to have a a shot at this. And and again, my only concern is the size of the venue.
Mm-hmm.
And I I think there ought to be some sort of if you have a hundred and you sell two hundred tickets, you're in trouble. If you have a venue that's, and we and we've got several that that have ten acres in the venue, but they're in over a hundred acres, they could park and their distance from people is a lot greater than others, which makes them a much stronger candidate for this. I think the smaller the venue, the more restrictive we need to be, the bigger the venue, the more I'm willing to open up the aperture a little bit. I'd just like to see what staff thinks and think about it from that perspective.
Let let us do this. Um, let let us come up with some standards or thoughts for for consideration. We'll bring that back to the board. Uh, the board can can, you know, chew on those and 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 make tweaks. Um, and then we can refer that back to the planning commission uh, for their review and and recommendation to the board.
Alright, that sounds like a plan. This came to us with an approval from the planning commission. Based on our our concerns and questions, we're gonna send it back.
Yeah, we'll we'll do.
You'll incorporate these these questions into your discussion.
Suggested considerations for you to look at in sending it back to the board or to the commission.
Excellent.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, thank you. That concludes agenda item number nine. Um, agenda item number ten is informational and calendar items. Mr. Parton, you're gonna do that? I know we've got Martin Luther King's birthday coming up next week and VACO. Mr. Black, you're going to VACO?
Government Day, I probably will not be able to attend because.
VACO's the nineteenth?
Yeah, the nineteenth, cause.
Mr. Underwood's going, okay, great. Oh, Ms. Long, okay, excellent. Mr. Parton?
Mr. Chair, we do have a request from the schools for a a meeting uh, at the January twenty fourth or to meet early uh, in advance of the the six P M. regular meeting on January twenty four.
Yes, the purpose of that meeting is to?
Give me just a second and I'll tell you. So they they would like to discuss uh, four topics. Um, the FY twenty four uh, CIP, the salary study, uh, year-end funds and the FY twenty four budget, um, priorities and and the the governor's budget.
Fiscal year twenty four CIP, salary study, year-end funds.
And the twenty four budget, operating budget.
Twenty four, operating budget or governor's budget?
Uh, well, their 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 general budget and uh, with regard to um, their priorities and and the governor's budget is my understanding.
Yeah, I don't, is the governor's budget out yet? Okay, so that that one's there. Okay, how does the board uh, wish to handle this? Mrs. Seeley, you had a?
I think it's too soon for all of this. I mean, it's January. That's my personal opinion.
Okay, the.
I I mean, I'd like to go down to the general assembly and see what the sentiment is, you know, and I won't do that until they get rolling a little bit and bills start to go to committees. I mean, there is a long process in this, and I think this is a long session because this is the biennial budget, which is gonna get.
The new governor's budget.
Right, 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 right.
Well, luckily for us, our our February board meeting's on the fourteenth. I just looked at it. Um, and doesn't the school board usually make its budget presentation to us in February?
Yes.
I thought that was the case. You wanna meet after they make their budget presentation or before they make their budget presentation? Mr. Black?
I I mean, the earlier we hear the information to me, the better. I, that's, I'd rather hear it and be prepared for it than cause by mid-February, we should be in the heart of our own, so I would, I'm fine with it.
Mr. Forehand?
I can go either way. We can, I'm I'm fine with it.
Okay, Ms. Smith, you will have the budget presentation to the county in March or April this year? You're hoping for March, which is what it normally was. We just got slowed down the last couple of years for different reasons, so.
Um, Mr. Thomas, I'm I'm, most schools do out, I'll work on their budget, you know, starting in, you know, October and on through. And I think they're probably continuing to work, but I don't see I don't see a reason to meet next week. I mean, week after next, until we have some idea of um, where we're trying to go. I mean, I just I I don't think it's necessary at this point.
Okay, and Mrs. Long, did you make a comment? Yeah. Turn your mic on, just to make sure.
If we meet on the twenty fourth, it's gonna be more of them doing a presentation to us outside the board meeting. And so perhaps they could do that as a presentation to the board so we don't have to get here at four, cause we do have people that work. Um, so meeting at four would be rough on some of our supervisors. I I don't know, I could do either way. I could do either way, but it's just it's, I would think you could do it as a presentation at the board meeting if they wanted to. Cause it's gonna be one-sided, cause we don't have our information yet.
Alright, why don't we do this, Mr. Parton? Why don't, why don't we ask the the school board uh, if they could present this, if they could give us this information at our twenty fourth meeting? Um, just give us the written information. And then the board would have an opportunity to to review that information and then we set up a meeting for them after we've gotten the information.
Okay.
And then that way, we would, we would at least have some questions and be able to discuss back and forth what what the things are rather than just have a presentation.
Okay.
So I I see some school members here, but if you could relay that to the superintendent that we we would love to receive this information that that they're preparing written at the twenty fourth meeting so we can distribute it among the board members or give it to you and then we'll set up a meeting after that. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Any other information?
I think you've you've covered uh, the other, the other highlights.
Yeah, offices closed Monday. And Mr. Underwood and Mr. Black are going to Va- um, Mrs. Long are going to VACO. And then we meet again on the twenty fourth. We've come to the uh, drilling conclusion. Mr. Forehand, any closing? Do you wanna go?
Actually, I was gonna, um, not sure if Mr. Sheeble's here. Just wanted to get an update on the lighting of the softball field, cause they are start their season in about thirty days.
Yeah, usually they.
They start practicing in February. Mr. Sheeble?
Yes, sir. Good evening. The uh, contractor has ordered all the equipment. It is on-site and secured. Uh, they have submitted a pay app for the stored items and we are waiting, uh, they have uh, applied and received their building permit and are now uh, waiting on a schedule that we were hoping to have the end of last week, beginning of this week, so we have not seen that yet. So I have told them that we have an upcoming.
From them?
Sir?
We're waiting on the schedule from them?
Yes, so they've they've got till June to put it in, so uh, we're we're trying to get that done. Um, the contractor, it sounds like he wants to move, so we're just waiting on when they're actually going to mobilize and then be on the site, so.
Okay. Do they have an ETA on when they start, how long it will take?
Um, I don't know that any, I can find out.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Black, closing board comments?
No.
Mr. Seeley, closing board comments?
No, sir.
Mr. Underwood, closing board comments?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Long, closing board comments?
No, sir.
And I at this time have none either, so we will uh, take a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chairman?
Begging.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously, we stand adjourned.